Very good. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall on Monday evening, March 6th, 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's cable information channel 1301 and on the town's YouTube channel. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem if she would lead us in invocation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful day today. Thank you for your wonderful, this wonderful community that we live in. I pray that you will give each of us on council wisdom to guide and direct the town of Lexington. Give us humility and openness as we serve the citizens of Lexington. Lord, thank you for our men and women that work at Town Hall. I pray for protection, guidance, and direction every day as they work for our citizens. And, Lord, I also pray for our citizens that you'll keep protection around them each and every day. Thank you, dear Lord, for all your blessings for our community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, I'd like to ask Scout Pack 425 from the Zion Lutheran Church, they would please come forward. Everybody, please stand, remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Scout Pack 425, somebody want to say something? Everybody ran from the microphone. Well, we really appreciate y'all being here tonight. It looks like you have a great pack there. It's exciting to see that many young people involved, so we appreciate what you do for our community. Thank you. Appreciate y'all being here.
Let's have their scoutmaster get up there.
I am not the scout leader, but the scoutmaster. My name is Alex Smith. I am the den leader of the Arrow of Lights from Pack 425 at Zion Lutheran Church on Corley Mill Road. We have boys and girls all in fifth grade. They're just about to finish their requirements and cross over into Boy Scouts and Scouts BSA.
Very good. We appreciate y'all being with us tonight.
And for those of you who don't know, Mr. Smith's brother is on the Myrtle Beach City Council. His twin brother, so don't get him confused, like I have in the past.
Very good. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Our first item of business for this evening, I'd like to report on our executive session. Tonight's executive session, we had two legal issues. One issue was regarding pending litigation. The other was advice regarding agenda items. We had one contractual issue, it was a downtown development issue, and we had one personnel issue. This was a routine personnel matter. No vote was taken in executive session, other than to vote to adjourn executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So moved.
Ms. Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, second set motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We'll move right into deletions on the agenda. Are there any items to delete from the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like for us to delete the presentation for the University of South Carolina's women's basketball team. Not only did they win the SCC Championship this weekend, but I expect on April the 3rd, they will be the national champions, so let's just wait.
We'll wait. Very good. We'll put that one off because we may have to adjust some verbiage on that one. Very good. We'll take that one off. That is item number two under Presentations. Very good. We'll move right into approval of minutes. A copy of the minutes from the council work session on February 21st, 2023 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any additions, omissions, or corrections to council work session, February 21st, Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manus, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those minutes are now approved. At this time, we'll move right into Presentations. Our first presentation this evening is for Director Allen Lutz. If you would, please come forward, Director Lutz. Director Lutz is our director of our Utilities Department. We'd like to read a proclamation to him and his staff on this very special day. Allen, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you for being with us. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington declaring March 6th, 2023 as Water Professionals Day. Whereas on February 15th, 2023, the South Carolina General Assembly adopted the first Monday in March as Water Professionals Day in South Carolina, as presented by the Senate Agriculture and Natural Resources Committee. And whereas, Town of Lexington joins in the celebration to commend all those who serve as guardians of our water through their work in public water utilities to ensure that our drinking water is properly managed and clean for public consumption. Whereas, Water Professionals are part of the statewide comprehensive water management team who maintain public drinking water systems, public wastewater reclamation systems, and stormwater system operations, and their many duties directly contribute to public health, economic growth, and community sustainability. Whereas, the Town of Lexington led by our Utilities Director, Allen Lutz, for over 30 years, and his staff of 48, served 10,422 water customers and 22,483 sewer customers by overseeing 228 miles of water lines, 399 miles of sewer lines, 6,272 manholes, 1,145 fire hydrants, 148 pump stations, three elevated storage tanks, two ground storage tanks, and four high-service pumps. And whereas, Water Professionals are often unsung heroes who choose to serve their communities by protecting our environment to ensure clean water protected from pollutants and runoff, none of which could be done without highly skilled, trained, and dedicated staff. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the citizens of the town of Lexington to express their gratitude to all Water Professionals for their commitment to preserving the well-being of each customer and encourage others to recognize the value of all duties performed by the Town of Lexington Utilities Department and all Water Professionals who unselfishly serve their communities. Dated the 6th day of March, 2023, Steve McDougall, Mayor. So if you work for the Utilities Department, y'all come on up.
Where's she moving?
I'll be shy. Come on. All right, y'all gather around, let's take a quick picture. Now, y'all don't understand, people in the public don't get it, do they? How very fragile that water system is and what these men and women that work for this department actually do on a day-to-day basis that we don't hear about. Sometimes happen at 3:00 in the morning, don't they? So, very good. Congratulations to all of y'all. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, Allen, we're gonna let you say a few words, if you don't mind.
Thank you, guys. And a lady.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First thing is, staff is the ones that do all the work.
Yes.
They're responsible, and I'm proud of all of them. We appreciate what you do for us to keep us taking care of your system.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Allen.
Thank you.
You did a wonderful job.
Very good. Thank you. Our next presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Mayor Pro Tem Livingston. This is a proclamation recognizing Paul Taylor for service to the community. Is Paul here? Paul, make it tonight. Yeah, he is. My glasses don't see far away, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington recognizing Paul Taylor for service to the community. Whereas, Paul Taylor owns and operates a local business, professional pressure washing, and lawn care in Lexington. Whereas, a portion of the services he provides includes landscaping and cleaning of signs and inter子subdivisions in and around the town of Lexington. Whereas, he has been providing this service free of charge to many subdivisions around the town as a gesture of goodwill and a contribution to the community. And whereas, the town of Lexington is a cleaner and more beautiful place due to his unselfish contribution. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Paul Taylor is hereby recognized and commended for providing this valuable service to the community and is thanked for his unselfish efforts toward beautification of the town of Lexington, dated the 6th day of March, 2023. And I can say, he did clean Wood Creek Sign free of charge where I live, and the neighbors were in awe. They didn't even realize how dirty it was until after he was finished. So, he, and just from what I've seen, and I don't know Mr. Taylor at all, but just from what I've seen, he's doing this all over the community just to make it a more beautiful place. So, we appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate the recognition, and, you know, we're just doing that because the community, you know, has supported us over, what, the last 34 years? So, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us.[764.82][764.82](Applause) That's amazing what you're doing. We, we've worked really hard to beautify Lexington, and you're doing it free of charge and just out of the goodness of your heart, so we appreciate you. Thank you. All right, our next presentation this evening, this is our final presentation. This is from the Chief of Police, Terrence Green. This is a Lexington Police Department Officer of the Year for 2022.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Town of Lexington citizen. It's always great to come before you and bring this award to you. He chaired officers Lexington Police Department, nominated a candidate who exemplifies the quality of Inspector Art Rich. Art Rich was a dedicated, inspiring, outstanding example to all employees and civilians of Lexington Police Department. He was always diligent to his call of duty, never wavering in his dedication responsibilities. Despite his lengthy and difficult battle with cancer, Art refused to give up and continued to work hard, day after day, while keeping a positive and encouraging attitude until his passing, March 29, 2014. Our 2022 Art Rich Employee of the Year goes to Corporal Caitlin Vorvody. Vorvody has been employed with the department for 10 years and has held the position of patrol officer, school resource officer, investigator, and now corporal for the Patrol Division. Her fellow officer states, Vorvody epitomized the department mission of building a partnership with not only Lexington residents, but within the department. Knowledge of department policies and procedures, understanding the dynamics of each event within the department, as well as compassion for community, make her a quality candidate for Officer of the Year. Another officer said her level-headed and calm demeanor was a welcome addition to the supervisor role. Having previous experience in patrol, special operation division, and criminal investigations made adapting to a leadership role seamless for Vorvody. Investigator appreciate her thorough handling of cases from start, making the jobs more streamlined, as proper reporting, writing, initial follow-ups are completed immediately. Understanding how each division works, each division operates has given her a much-needed advantage during a time of needed collaboration among divisions. Another officer states, in addition to our primary duties, Corporal Vorvody holds instructor certification in defensive tactics and firearms instruction, and is willing to give additional training and assistance to those who need it in those areas. She has reached out to those who, that she recognized, may want additional help and offered to assist outside the normarum of what is actionable. She's also an integral part of the negotiation team, bringing years of experience to those in a mental health crisis. Corporal Vorvody is married and has two boys.
Nice words about the chief. That's all he needed to say.
Thank you, chief. I'm very grateful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. That concludes our presentations for this evening. We'll move right into a vision plan update. The Virginia Hilton Park construction and renovation is in full swing. The park will expand an additional 8.25 acres, and will feature new trails, picnic shelters, and a Gaga pit, just to name a few. What's a Gaga pit?
It's kind of like, it's a little wooden octagon, they kick the ball inside of it.
Yeah, inside of it, yeah. It's a big thing.
Volcan escape.
Our teenagers, our middle schoolers that served on our committee, it was a big thing for them.
Well, y'all will have a Gaga pit soon, y'all. Keep balls around. We're excited about that. A reminder that the park is closed while construction is underway. As construction on Old Mill Pond Dam continues, the one-mile walking trail that the town is building around the pond is currently out to bid. That's a really good sign. Once work has started, is it expected to take about one year to complete? This is just an example of the vision plan goals that we have set forth for the town. If you'd like to visit those goals, you can find those at lexsc.com to see all of our town projects. That concludes our vision plan update. We'll move right into our traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. SCDOT is in the process of resurfacing Crouch Street, Elm Street, and Addie Lane. Please exercise caution in these areas. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for April the 26th at 8:00 a.m., and please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or a pothole that may need repair.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This time, we'll move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-07-079, located at 346 Park Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, item number two, this is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4319-05-001, located at 705 North Lake Drive, and Lexington County Tax Map Number 431905002, located at 608 Northwood Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, item number three, final, final reading of an ordinance annexing Boardwalk Villa condominiums. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. This is our final item tonight, final reading of an ordinance amending the Corley Mill Tiff Ordinance. Anyone here wish to speak to that? That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is Councilmember Todd Corns. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-07-079, located at 346 Park Road. Councilmember Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Dowdy Family Trust owns .69 acres located at 346 Park Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family residence is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Park Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this property. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Corns makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Kathy Manus seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 431905001, located at 705 North Lake Drive, and Lexington County Tax Map Number 431905002, located at 608 Northwood Road. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. PLCW Administrative Trust owns 1.2 acres on two parcels located at 705 North Lake Drive and 608 Northwood, and has petitioned to annex the property. Scott's Furniture Store is currently located on the property. Properties in town near these parcels are zone general commercial and limited commercial. North Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road, and Northwood is classified as a local road. Planning Commissioner reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcels. The commission also recommended arterial road classification for North Lake Drive and local road classification for Northwood Road. Make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyle seconded that motion. Any further discussion? To show you how sometimes business in government takes a little while, this annexation took 30 years to complete. So, there's a lot of people that have been visiting this annexation. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. This is final reading of an ordinance amending the Corley Mill Tiff Ordinance.
Did I skip one? You skipped, Todd.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lyle.
Boardwalk Villas.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Boardwalk Villa condominiums. Mr. Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boardwalk Villas Homeowners Association inquired about annexing their neighborhood into the town. The Boardwalk Villas is a 48-unit condominium complex located on 1,500 block of North Lake Drive. Each unit is privately owned. Common areas in the development are owned and maintained by the HOA. In January, the town received an annexation petition signed by all individual property owners, 100% of them, of this neighborhood, including the common areas. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during the February meeting, and they recommended protected residential 2, or PR2, zoning of this property. The commission also recommended arterial road classification for North Lake Drive and local road classification for Villa Road. Mr. Mayor, with 100% requesting this, I would move for a final reading approval.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem seconds. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, we definitely, they all came to us, just like Mr. Lyle said, 100%. We have an annexed, forcibly annexed a neighborhood since we did my neighborhood about 20 years ago, and you got Kathy Manus when that happened. So, we don't forcibly annex neighborhoods. This one wanted to come into town, Lexington, and we're glad that they're there, and I look forward to voting yes.
Thank you, Ms. Manus. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. This is item number four, final reading of an ordinance amending the Corley Mill Tiff Ordinance. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Corley Mill Tiff Bond Ordinance needs to be updated, amended, to address issues of additional rollover refundings of bands. Due to the unexpected design, engineering, and regulatory delays, including delays directly or indirectly related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Corley Mill redevelopment project has not been completed. The delays have resulted in a ban rollover refundings beyond the time provided in the original ordinance. I make a motion for final reading approval of ordinance amending the Corley Mill Tiff Ordinance.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business this evening is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. This is first reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County Tax Map Number 5420-02-006, located at the corner of South Church and Roberts Street. Ms. Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as we see, we have a lot of town residents here because they're interested in this one, so I'm gonna read it. Mr. Eric Gotham with Gorham Properties submitted a request to rezone a parcel located on the corner of South Church Street and Roberts Street. The property is currently zone-protected residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to high-density residential to support the development of a multifamily apartment complex. The Planning Commission reviewed this request during their February meeting and recommended against this request. I make a motion to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation and to go against this request.
Ms. Manus makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mayor Pro Tem seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Ms. Manus, that was, that was to deny this request, correct?
To deny the request, what the Planning Commission had sent to us.
We good there? Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
I believe this is also not in, this is inconsistent with, the approval would have been inconsistent with our recently updated comprehensive plan. Is that right?
That is correct. We spent years and a lot of time and effort went into rewriting that to protect us from just this thing.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the citizens who reached out to us on this issue, and for them being here tonight, because that's why we're here. When there's an issue that's going to affect your neighborhood, your property, you need to make sure we know about it, so thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That motion is denied.[1744.66][1744.66](Applause) Can't speak during this. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. This is first reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County Tax Map Number 4321-02-017, located on Third Avenue. Mr. Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sean Sheehan submitted a request to rezone a parcel located in the 200 block of Third Avenue. This property is currently zone limited commercial. The applicant is requesting to rezone it to protected residential to allow a single-family home to be built on the property. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended approval of the rezoning. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading- Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Our next item of new business is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3400-01-033 located at 115 Andrew Corley Road. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James E. Wingard owns approximately 2.51 acres located at 115 Andrew Corley Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Circle K Convenience Store is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-general commercial, limited commercial, and protected residential. North Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcel and arterial road classification for North Lake Drive. Make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5596-01-003 located at 135 Fergone Road. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Empire LLC owns approximately 3.78 acres located at 135 Fergone Road and has petitioned to annex this same property. A heavy equipment repair business is located currently on this site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and general commercial. Fergone Road is classified currently as a local road. Planning Commission will review this annexation during their March meeting to recommend zoning and a road classification for this parcel. And, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion for first reading approval of the same.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. This is first reading of an ordinance amending the sign ordinance regarding non-conforming signs and definition of billboards. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When the sign ordinance was passed in 1999, owners of businesses with non-conformant signs were given 10 years to bring their signs into compliance. The date indicated in the 1999 version of the ordinance was October the 1st, 2000, I mean, 2010. The town's annexation agreement also includes a provision that gives sign owners in newly annexed areas 10 years to bring signs into compliance after the date of annexation. In its current form, the code of ordinance does not specifically address what to do with non-conformant signs in newly annexed areas after October 2010. Staff has through practice given a 10-year amortization period in such cases. So we need to update that. The definition of billboard should be updated to remain consistent with state law. The attached ordinance draft addresses both recommended changes and I give, I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manas seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manas. This is first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance chart of permitted uses. Councilmember Manas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. During the February Planning Commission meeting, the commission discussed amending the zoning ordinance to address the growing number of self-storage businesses located in the town. There are currently nine self-storage businesses in the town with three more currently in various stages of development. Many of these businesses are located along prominent commercial corners. At the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Commission recommended adoption of the attached amendment to the chart of permitted uses in the zoning ordinance. This change will limit these businesses to industrial areas and better prioritize visibility for economic drivers that offer employment opportunities and amenities for the community. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Ms. Manas makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Williams seconds that motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Paul, this, the, the three that are currently in process will get to continue with their project if they so choose.
Yes, sir, they, they would have a vested right to continue ahead. So it would just cover new applicants.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is a boards and commissions appointment. Mr. Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town recently received Mr. Omrital Champinari's notice of resignation from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. In an effort to maintain a required representative from the hospitality industry, staff liaison Wesley Crosby reached out to Mr. A.J. Champinari, who has been in the hotel industry for 25 years. Mr. Champinari submitted a boards and commissions application and is interested in serving on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Champinari to this commission.
Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyle seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And A.J. is on that board. That concludes our business for this evening. At this time, we'll hear announcements from Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start by extending a happy birthday to our own Ron Williams, who's, whose birthday is today. So, happy birthday, Ron.
Thanks, sir.
Um, Lexington County Blowfish will host the 8th Annual Shamrock Parade this Saturday on Main Street, starting at 2 o'clock. I believe the weather is not looking good, but we'll see. So, stand by for that. Uh, don't forget to spring forward. Until we get rid of that, as a state, we're going to continue to move our clocks forward and backwards and this is the moving it forward on Sunday. Um, Town Council will meet again on Monday, March the 20th at 6 o'clock for the work session. Planning Commission will meet on March 22nd, uh, here, 8 o'clock in the council chambers. And the new, uh, Spring Concert Series has been released. This is a free set of concerts. Um, mark your calendars. They are going to begin on April the 6th with the band Under the Sun. Again, these are Thursdays, first one being April 6th, starting at 6:30. You can go to icehouseamphitheater.com for all the dates and all the lists of the bands. On behalf of the mayor and my fellow council members, thank you for attending tonight or watching this. Thanks and have a good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Very good. Are there any questions from the news media about tonight's agenda? Anyone here with the news media? Hearing none. Are there any pub, public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Y'all got kicked out of the Planning Commission meeting, so I thought I'd give y'all a chance instead of excusing you if anyone wanted to speak tonight. We wanted to absolutely hear from you if you wanted to say anything. We're glad to have you with us tonight, but, uh, definitely want to give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, we need, I'd like to welcome Ms. Julia Kite here tonight, too. She used to be our clerk of court when I was on council in the beginning.
Very good. Welcome. Glad to have you. Did you keep up with everything we were saying?
She got it all.
She's taking notes.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming out, being with us tonight and, uh, showing your support and, um, caring about your community because we do too and we want to, we, like Ms. Manas said, if there's something bothering you, we want to know about it. So, um, if you hadn't have said anything to us, uh, landowners are entitled to go through the process, so we had to let them go through that process, but, um, uh, we had your back on it. We appreciate y'all being here. Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, March 6, 2023. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's cable information channel 1301 and the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.